Are we recording?
Yep.
All right. I'd like to call the regular monthly meeting of the Salem Board of Education to order at six o'clock. The people, please stand to pledge the flag. My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I'd like to open the meeting for public comment. If there's anybody who would like to speak, if you would come to the podium and identify yourself.
Good evening. My name is Joe P. President of Salem since nineteen seventy. And I think I'm going to look forward to meeting it down in a hot. First thing I'd like to say is I'd like to offer the agree to disagree with issues that the Salem Board has with people in the public or taxpayers. One quick note, it's my last special meeting that I showed up by was silent. And the reason that I was silent because my first special meeting last year, I was told there was no public audience. So if I should decide to come to another special meeting, I will not be talking in the meeting area. Because being part of the public, I didn't feel that I could speak. That's the only reason I did not communicate with you guys on that. So I'll get right to it. I don't have too much to say. I'll be leaving early as I normally do. Tom McMorris asked me if you received his letter that he sent to Julie. Did you share with the Board Tom McMorris's letter that he sent to the school?
About the connector?
Yeah.
I did not receive a letter directly from Tom. I received a letter from the HPC.
Okay, well, now I'll get back to him on that because he.
I do not believe so. If there was, if it was a mail or an email, we would have to check what.
He sent you a letter. I don't have a copy of the letter. He was unfortunate, can't be here tonight. So I said I would do the standard for him. So probably he didn't get the Kendall centric, Kendall centric school district. It's a good read. Number one, I have a part of a copy. You can Google it and look. They had a building project back in the teens or whatever, and they had eight million dollars left over. And the board decided to proceed with other stuff that was not on the ballot that they had voted on. And the state found them, they went in and they slapped their hands because they did not allow the board. The board did not allow the public to vote on the additional money that was exchanged. I'm not saying that the art shouldn't be voted in. Personally, I don't think it needs to be. We talked about securing the school. Well, I think the roof is an important part of securing the school, which you're going to turn around next year, the year after, after if you do get, if you guys do close any arch and state doesn't come in and shut you down. Because this money, you don't have this money yet. Is that correct?
Correct. It's money that we would be allowed to borrow.
Yes. So, and you haven't finished building the plane yet. So they're still in design work with the historic society and all that stuff.
Yeah, it's still.
Okay, so it's ongoing. So I'm going to be as transparent as I can with you guys. If the governor ever gets back to me and lets me know what areas or what avenues I have to proceed in to allow voters to vote on closing up the archway and whatever else you guys are saying. On June first, there was a meeting at the Proud Trip Building. And some concerned residents came, spoke, probably a third of them had no idea what was going on. So I mean, when Mr. Glover proposed a building project, he went around to Jack, he went all over. Had meetings at firehouses, at the school. This additional work, I haven't seen the superintendent or the board or anybody else say, well, let's have all the public meeting. That being said, I was at the budget hearing. If I heard correctly, the school has money to resurface the track, which Karen said that we have money in the bank. The school has this money.
In the reserve.
Okay, but it's your money if we're not borrowing it. Then you said that the public is going to have to vote on whether we resurface the track.
A repair reserve, you can't take money out of unless the public votes on taking it out. Unless it's an emergency reserve repair, then you can take it out and you have to replenish it within two years. A track reserving wouldn't be an emergency. So, yes.
So how did this money get put in that reserve? It was, I mean, why couldn't you just put it in a separate bank account, track reserving? And when it was these times.
It doesn't work that well. You can't.
Okay, well, I guess I'll have to follow up on that. One of the last things, like I said, this meeting was held at the Proud Trip Building. And some people, probably two thirds of them, didn't know what was going on. Some of us took petitions, and I'd like to present to the board, I know that you've got it, a copy of, there's roughly eighty signatures in there from the public. We had to be careful what houses we went to to make sure we didn't get shot when we pulled somebody's door in there. But, yeah. Let's see. So I presented you with the petitions. Going to get back to Tom. I don't know if he sent it over email or whatever.
I'll look at my junk mail, too, now that I know to look for it. But I typically, I think I've received emails from him before, so.
Okay. Well, I know that the Salem Historical Society has also got some issues on there. One other thing is the petition that you have, I have copies of them, and they will be going to the Westfald Regional Office. I have them look into, when I called them, they said, well, you're just one person. And you're correct, when you had the open forum, the public forum on page two, I was one of about maybe twelve people. And I think the first thing I said out of my mouth at that, I believe that meeting was recorded, I would say, hey, that's great. What did we get to vote on? There's not going to be any vote. So. I guess that's all I've got. The last thing I'd like to, I know we're getting some new board members. And I would ask the new board members as well as the old board members to become part of the solution and not part of the problem. And if you'd like more signatures on a petition, we can do that. I know that there's a lot more people in Salem. There's roughly only two hundred and fifty people that voted on it on the budget. Guys, have a good evening. You've got a lot to chew on. You know where I'm at. Who's got my email? I've got numbers in the book. You want to discuss this, as long as we can agree to disagree, that's fine. We're not making the school any paper for your point. Somebody went around and counted, there's over a hundred non-bullproof windows in the school. How the hell did anything happen? But that being said, both in the archway and screwing with the bus round, you know, roundabout. It would be nice if, when they finish building the plane before it lands, that the public could actually get to see what the board. You know, I don't think that five people should be able to decide on four million dollars. Five people didn't get to decide on twenty million dollars. Thank you very much. You guys have a good evening. I hope there's more people that want to talk.
Thank you.
Twenty minutes left for public hearing.
Is there any other people who would like to share comments or concerns? Mr. Davis, if you would come up to the podium?
Don Davis, District President, not quite along with Mr. P. Just to repeat stuff I've said over the past, who knows how many meetings. I actually support the project. I understand the benefits. I also stand the, understand the concerns of closing the archway. I understand the benefit to the school on many accounts. I also understand the benefit and the need for having a main entrance to the school, which it does not have now. However, I, as I've said before, I really disagree with the process it's taken to get here. And I very strongly disagree with the funding route that it's taken. You've taken money from a voted on project, put it somewhere else. As much as I support the project, and I've stated that in the past, I know why it exists. I know why it should be done. I hope it does get done. By considering the pushback the board seems to be receiving, at this time, the board creates a separate capital project, allow funding for both the archway and the entrance way, instead of trying to squeeze both projects into leftover money from a different capital project, and do both correctly and to the benefit of the school. And it seems apparent the board hasn't done its job in educating the people outside the school why this should be done. So perhaps you do need to consider putting it up for, making a capital project. That way, everybody has a chance to talk about it, and board and superintendent can explain why it should and needs to be done for the school. Thank you.
Any other comments or concerns to share with the board? All right. And at this point, I'm going to close the public comment session. There will be an additional one after our business is concluded at the end of the meeting. If there's anybody who wishes to, to share a concern then. At this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to the superintendent for our presentation and report.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We have a few short presentations tonight, just to, two related to curriculum and one just a closeout and summary of our strategic plan. And first off, we have Mrs. Mavica and Mr. LeBlanc, who are going to present to us a recommendation for a new K through six math curriculum.
Before they get started, I'll just say, I've had a pleasure working here the last few months. I've got two days left here in Salem, but I really haven't enjoyed my time. It's a lovely community. I love the kids, lots of hugs. I've never been an elementary school principal before. Middle school kids don't hug that way. This, this committee process was a really good one. We had eight active people involved in looking at the math curriculum, looking at resources. Colleen helped me reach out to some of the textbook companies. Got all kinds of resources here to look at and then move, Bosse's facilitator, both, they're going to review the process a little bit here and talk about what we're recommending and then move forward with it, similar to what we did with the LA last year. So Trevor, Hallie.
Yeah, thank you. For those that don't know me, I'm Trevor LeBlanc. And I think Mark just kind of covered all the slides almost that I need to go. So that, that's good. But this is my first text, yeah, yours. That's about right where mine is. But this is my first textbook selection committee and actually the first one that I will have used since I've been teaching fifth grade. Why did we do it? For unified curriculum across grade levels. Right now, I can speak as a new teacher that just came into fifth grade last year. That wasn't the case and guidance and coming up with my own material and talking with past teachers in fourth and fifth grade. It was tough. So I look forward to having something that's unified, you know, right through. I know that in fourth grade, they got some of the things that I'm going to be teaching fifth grade taught the same way and then so on through sixth. A curriculum that is current for a changing world and common measurable targets to ensure consistent student learning. And it's also aligned with our current Next Gen standard. These are the three programs we looked at closely, and we all had to fill out a Google form after we looked through them, which was a, I know it's three, but that was a very lengthy process to really go through them and just look at each one and how they differ and the different resources they have. The process. So these are the, the teachers that were involved in it. Mr. Fish just said it. It was Cindy, Colleen, Laurel, Tina, Suzanne, Brian, Trevor, and Frank Kronhopper. And the guiding questions that we came up with at our first meeting are, what are your expectations for a math textbook? What do we value? And what are our non-negotiables in a textbook? And then we went from there, I mean, going through the three different textbook companies.
Still you.
Still me, okay. Committee work steps. We all volunteered to participate in the process. They requested samples and we were able to look through them. And we got different grade level samples for each grade level to be able to look at something they would be possibly using. We had a facilitator from Bosse's who helped us come up with these non-negotiables and then whittle it down to the, the ten, because I think there was what, like, maybe like fifty, like, or forty when we first started.
That's a lot and then whittle it down.
Yeah. And then that kind of based our search process on the, the three curriculums from there. You know, we used to use those ten non-negotiables to build this there. We all conducted our own review and submitted feedback through a Google form, and results were shared with the committee and curriculum was selected based on the data. These were the non-negotiables that we came up with after whittling it down. There were a lot up there, but we all had to agree on a certain amount. Visuals that were student friendly, built in differentiation that supports students with gaps and extension activities, an online component for teachers and students that syncs with Google, a variety of formative assessments, components for math back fluency and practice, resources, supports, and supports that are accessible and usable for students and families that support learning at home. And we want to focus on where we're from. The results?
Our results. So we ended up coming up with Intermath. There's a surprise right there. So what we did with our Google form was it had all of the information compiled and the Bosse's facilitator in a very easy to use format here for us. And you can see with the circle over there that the Intermath had the highest score of two point eight average score in each category. It either tied or exceeded the scores of the I Ready or the Everyday Mathematics. So we're pretty confident that this is the best one to move forward with. Our next slide has some more comments on why we loved it so much. So some big pieces that we liked were its pace, the steps that it used, having more modules at a time compared to other ones we've used in the past, and the extreme amount of differentiation, not just for struggling students, but also for students that are exceeding what we, we may have placed for them. And we already use the HMH for ELA, so we're not used to it for the math because we're comfortable with that already. So it's an easier implementation for the teachers. In the platform, the online platform, it's easy to use and it's very highly engaging. So we play around with some of the tools compared to the other ones that we looked at. It's very engaging for both students and teachers. And it seems most manageable when you look at the different components and what is realistic throughout the school year and using it, looking back at our experiences with what we've come up with, with the, for their curriculums we've used. We found this would be one of the easiest to implement. So some things that the students will experience are gaining a positive attitude towards math, just the way that the program is set up, the activities that it has. It targets the whole child, inspires them to see themselves as doers of mathematics, and it allows them to monitor their growth, which is also motivating for them. And it provides them with a variety of opportunities to engage with the curriculum and to build understanding through the whole group instruction, small group, partner work, students work on collaboration and have, and can talk about math and have that discourse. So having this all built into the curriculum and having those practices through each grade level will help the students as they go through with the curriculum from grade to grade and have those habits of how we talk about math. It's just going to build every year, and this will go right up to sixth grade. And then students are more willing to take risks, so it promotes them taking healthy risks. And the teachers will experience the variety of formative assessments built in already and the amount of differentiation that it has already built in. We're very excited about that because in the past, those are materials that we have to scratch together ourselves. So having this all ready, it just makes that implementation piece much easier for us, which allows us to what, reach more content once. And it has the built in collection of data and to be able to use and analyze our data and to make adjustments as needed. So moving forward, so with this, if this is what we vote on and go with, what will happen? Similar to with the ELA is we will plan for a rollout in September kindergarten through six. This is a, this program is built through kindergarten through eighth, but we want to use up to sixth grade. And we want to stay true to the program and to promote teacher commitments and invigorate them in using it, get them on board and support for professional developments. So some of our next steps will be to obviously order the curriculum materials. Needs to be unboxed, ready to roll out right in September. And we're going to work on our unit planning, our training, getting other resources ready to go that roll out in September. During the next school year, so September, we're going to be using a checklist to go through our next gen standards, make sure we really are putting everything and fill in any gaps that we may see as we're using it. Have additional in-depth training during our superintendent days, and there'll be additional embedded professional development and debriefing reflection. And we'll begin working on our curriculum mapping. The next year after that, we'll have, we'll do some reflection and analyzing of data, make any adjustments we need to and plan for the following year to have the curriculum all, our ideas all set, work with our AIS providers, look at how many support materials can they use, and to plan for additional professional development. Questions?
You mentioned, you looked at the I Ready. We currently use I Ready in some forms for your assessments. Will you continue to do that or does this have its own assessments built in?
It just has its own components. That's not a conversation that we've gotten to yet. I think experiencing the program instructionally and taking a look at those other pieces, I think is, is worthwhile discussion. But that's not the stuff we've taken this time.
So just to add to that, we've had a similar conversation with the ELA teachers. So some of the teachers that, so Trevor, being on the upper elementary grade level, is content specific with math and science. At the lower grade levels, the teachers teach all the content areas with one teacher. So we've, this is our first full year. We're completing our first full year with the HMH into reading. And so we've had that conversation. But the thought is that, you know, down the road, we, we may continue to look at that. The diagnostics are somewhat different. There, there is more of an instructional, some instructional and intervention components with I Ready as well that have some diagnostics. We're just using I Ready right now for three times a year, beginning, middle, and end. And that is nice to have those as an additional data point. So in the near future, we will probably next year just depend on I Ready and some of the data that we're getting. So we're also working on warehousing our, our ELA, our math data, along with the I Ready scores, attendance, referrals, and then we'll eventually have a, a social emotional diagnostic that we'll phase in in the next year or two. So we'll have all of that where we can get a complete look for our students. But it's going to take a few years, I, I would think, really three years down the road to really know how they all fit together. And I think the first thing is, you know, as Colleen mentioned, is to get everyone who are trained using the day-to-day pieces. We, this is really only our second full year of using I Ready. And so really kind of staying, it seems longer. We did pilot it a little bit during COVID, but it was difficult because students weren't, not all students were using it. It was difficult if they were not in person to really jump on board. So this is really our second full year. So I think what, in the near future, we'll utilize both of them, we're able to maintain that cost-wise. The other piece is it just provides some additional intervention resources for the teachers as well. That there's an individual self-paced learning modules that are unique to each individual. So if you and I take the same diagnostic, it's going to focus on what each of our skill sets requires we're tending to. So that, those are some additional resources. The other thing I would like to mention is similar with ELA. This will be purchased with the ARP fund. It's an amazing opportunity for us, as you know, from the ELA purchase, with all the professional development, all the materials. It's close to sixty thousand dollar investment at K through six. And that's not something, that's about what our textbook budget is for our entire district in a year typically. So it takes several years to phase in, and that's very difficult, I think, to see the possibilities and the impact with students. So I appreciate the teachers have been very responsive and on board. I think with Next Gen coming on and COVID, we really, something like this is kind of a two-for-one, right? We can, we can kind of get started, but it also helps them align to Next Gen in a very productive manner. So, you know, I think it's exciting. I think the teachers are excited, especially the ELA teachers that, that also teach ELA and math, having that same dashboard. The students are already seeing those dashboards on the online components already in the LA, so they'll be very familiar. So I think the learning curve for the students will be less. Some of our math teachers were just jumping on board, but, you know, so thank you. We had a great, I mean, everybody was involved and it was a busy year. So I appreciate all of the work and, and I think it's exciting.
Thank you. Unless there's any other comments.
How long did it take you to go through this process? How many meetings? You should flaunt your work.
Probably were the least amount of time. They did a lot of independent work through them and discussing, discussing with their colleagues. So there was a lot of time invested in being on that committee.
Yeah, they're, they're very in-depth curriculums, each one that we looked at, a variety of components. So to have you have to take the time to go and look at each of those and test them out ourselves as students and as teachers. So there's definitely a lot of work involved, so.
I think too, we started the process right around, right before the holidays, kind of getting, kind of laying the breadcrumbs and, you know, saying, listen, can we do this to take the opportunity to use these funds? We have to spend the remaining funds by September. So it's not like we could wait another year or two to make this decision and have them available. And, and then we had that transition in principals. And when Mark jumped on board, you know, we kind of just had to pull it together, get our contacts for all of the, the samples and resources. And we learned some things from the rollout of ELA, but for the most part, it was positive. And we're going to use the same model of rolling out and support for the teachers if we move forward with this. So thank you.
Thank you.
So we do have another curriculum presentation. Mrs. Vicky Perkins, Social Studies is here. We have been looking for some additional electives and pathways. As some of you may know, I'm listening to me speak, I'm very passionate about exploring various graduation pathways. And there is a new civic readiness component and framework, really, that New York City is offering as a pathway. And it seems to be that although the pathway won't necessarily be required, there is going to be a much greater emphasis in the future on civics and civic mindedness among students. So we have the opportunity to add a class into the Social Studies Department. We have electives right now, obviously in our special area. We have electives right now, obviously in our special areas. We have some in science and social studies seem to be a possibility. And we had a possibility to couple, we, right now, we do civic readiness through our government class in the Social Studies Department. But there's been some conversations since I've been here about kind of what would the course look like? And how could we put it, so not only, you think about civic mindedness in a very, a very specific way, but it's really, there's skills, there's self-realization. There's a lot of preparation that makes just great citizens and not just in a service-related manner. So Vicky put together a proposal for a course that we'd like to offer. We do have interest in it for next year. And so she's just going to quickly take you through a little bit of our vision for it. It doesn't have a full curriculum at this point. She would work on it this summer if the board approves it.
So for those of you who don't know me, I'm Vicky Perkins. Some of you have had a much shorter redhead than the other Vicky Perkins, but I have been here for 19 years. I have taught every level of social studies except government and economics at the senior level, including two AP classes, which I teach now, AP World and AP US. So Julie came to me and asked me to create an elective. And after much deliberation, this is kind of where we ended up. The course would be called Culture, Society, and Personal Development. And it's kind of a combination of sociology, a little bit of economics, civics, and a little bit of American culture. And it would like work into leading into the civic literacy or the readiness pathway. Through some self-discovery, in fact, today I was online trying to find some personality quizzes. And I actually took one and it was spot on for me. So that's the first thing we're going to do. The kids will hopefully become productive, functioning members of society and valuable community members. I was, when I was thinking about this, I was just thinking within like one rural block here, we have the fire department, the EMS, little league coaches, youth soccer coaches, volunteers at the library, at the courthouse, at the theater, and school board members. So those are all voluntary, you know, positions that hopefully if these students want to go on, and whether they're in our community or whether they're in another community, you know, work towards, you know, getting involved in those things. This year, I mean, I think Julie gave you the list of the things that we're like going to work on. And again, starting at the personal level and kind of figuring out like, hey, what's, what's my niche? What can I help out with? What can I do, you know, to add back to the community? This year, we'll be working on our fourth SWA Day of Service. And there's a lot of legwork that goes into that day. And this year, what we're going to do is start in January with this group of kids. And they're going to be the ones that send out the emails to the town of Salem, the town of Shushin, the town of Hebron, introduce themselves and say, hey, you know, what kind of, you know, what kind of work do you guys need for us to do that day? And then follow up with phone calls and like really help Carol McPhee and I with those planning days. And that could be part of like, they're working towards a service project. Ideally, to get the pathway, it's actually would be an individual service project. And we'll have to like work on getting that in place. But this is a definite jumping off place for these guys. So, I mean, it's going to be anything from, you know, resumes and interviews. I might bring community members. I might actually say, hey, you know, go meet with Mrs. Maxwell, you're going to have a job interview today. Or like, you know, a pseudo quasi, you know, job interview today. Or you're going to, you know, go out and meet some community members and get involved that way. So I'm excited to do an elective. I've never taught a class and hasn't been very regimented by the state of New York of exactly what you have to do and have this huge test at the end. So I'm looking forward to it. It's a great group of kids. I think there's 11 or 12 that are signed up right now. And they're excited about it, so we'll see how it goes.
And if you go through and, I'm not sure if we have printouts of this particular, do we have printouts of these over?
We do not.
We do not, but they are online as well. You know, just to read through a few other topics, self-management skills, developing healthy relationships, responsible consumerism. So, you know, really, that's so important right now. And then part of that responsible consumerism will be a lot of ethics. But it talks about not only budgeting, but media literacy and fraud, theft, and scams, but learning, you know, about ethics and decision-making and what is their role in that? Because we also want to develop young adults who are not on the wrong side of, of some of these, you know, scams or things that are going on on social media. So I think that's a very important, a lot of the, the new generation, is it Gen Z now? I can't keep up. And a lot of them are entrepreneurs, they're more self-employed, you know, really, how do they fit in and develop the skillset and the ethics to, you know, really be productive and successful? So future planning, opportunities in the global marketplace. Vicky talked about participation in civic life and employability skills, and then of course civic engagement. And so, you know, as, as we talked about this, it'll be a work in progress. You know, once we, we get the inaugural year going, really then looking at, St. Eastman is really good about, she's worked a lot with Amy Maxwell on her three ag pathways. She's working with Todd DeSoto on a technology pathway, really looking at those key components. So if we would move forward in this direction. This is an opportunity for all, for all of our students, no matter what their level, whether they're going into a trade, they're going to a two or four-year school, they're going out to be employed right after graduation. This applies, this is a very universal course. Emerald Park developed something similar that they're requiring all of their seniors to take. So, you know, I think as we go on, we're going to look at how that fits in. Also attached for your review is the domains of civic readiness. So we think a lot about civic knowledge, and that's where that government force falls. This course really falls in the other three domains. Has a lot of possibilities for our students and just really offers us another pathway for students. That's not the traditional, you know, I need five regions exams passed to graduate. So, you know, I think really looking at all those opportunities that we can for students is important.
Sounds like a great course.
About 11 and 12th grader, I guess we didn't mention that.
Right.
For the time.
Definitely.
The Wall Street Journal just had a article on the lack of interpersonal skills by college graduates failing to meet employer expectations. And it seems like a neat way to weave that in.
So that's, I really like to start with emails when they, when they contact the community members, but I want to follow up with, you know, phone calls and in-person meetings because I think that's lacking. I think a lot of people like hide behind computer screens and want to do all their communication that way. And that's just not right. Here I am.
That's where you can be in Nigeria at Princeton.
You're looking.
Hey, any other questions? Thank you for all of your work, we appreciate it. So later, just I have a couple other updates, but just to follow up on the two presentations, I wanted to let you know that later, there's some recommended action to adopt the, the Intimate Curriculum and then to approve the new course for, for Social Studies elective. So we'll see those later. I did want, I'm just going to give a couple quick updates. And I did just want to do an update, a brief update on the strategic plan and the outcome of our work. So just a couple of things that are upcoming that some people may be interested in and just to let the board know of our timeline. So as you know, each year we are required through regulation to review our code of conduct, have hearings on our code of conduct. That will be in July, do not anticipate any sweeping changes. There'll be some tweaks to language in there, just recommended regarding some dress code, some, some things like that. But that's really more specific to the student handbook. So our code of conduct is not recommending any major changes, but we will have our hearing in July, while we're waiting period. And would expect to adopt that in August. That will give us time or required to post that in student handbooks and employing handbooks and to communicate those accordingly, usually on the first day of school. So what we do is we hand out the handbooks on the first day of school to students. So that would be the timeline for the code of conduct. We also have our district safety plan. Again, we do not anticipate any major changes to that. We're working with our new risk management company, Needham. They will, they're assisting with us on just making those updates. Some of them are just formal updates with some of our new administrators and our safety committee gave some feedback at our last meeting. So we will have that hearing in August so that we don't have to have two hearings in one night. And I know that's cumbersome in the summer. So we'll have that in August, we'll have our 30 days. We'll plan to adopt in September. And that gives us time, we are required by early October to notify certain agencies and provide that to New York State. So that will give us plenty of time to be on that timeframe. So just, those are coming up. Just an update, I did include, so we did have some conversation in our special meeting about this historic preservation commission, the Salem HPC. One of our residents did refer a little bit to that related to the connector. We did receive back some communication that they would like more specifics on our materials and our detailed plans. We had just shared our conceptual drawings, the same drawings that we shared as we discussed at the special meeting, but just an update for people who are here that we shared with the public, at the public forum. So they were just conceptual drawings. So I did include the letter that I did send to them in response to their letter, asking for those detailed plans. I did include that for the board, just for your reference. As we discussed, that we would look to revisit our requests with the HPC late fall or early winter, once we have the drawings, that's what our anticipated date from the architect. So I did want to share that with you. And it is attached to the agenda if anybody from the public is interested in that. And finally, just before I give the update, I want to just thank, you know, Mr. Fish and Mr. Switzer for their interim assignments, accepting them. I think we were so lucky. I feel like we just caught them at perfect moments. It's a very demanding job and, in my opinion, I think they went really above and beyond the role of interns. And we've accomplished a lot this year. And, you know, just for example, this, this search, he was instrumental in really, you know, some coordinating some of the elements so that the teachers could make good use of their time. And we so much appreciate them for that. I know the faculty and staff do as well. And, you know, we all are lucky to have had them this year. So I just really wanted to make the board aware of how appreciative we are of their appointment and of their service. And finally, it's busy week, very busy. We had award ceremony today, three through five. We have, I'm going to speak while I'm walking over. Tomorrow, we have moving up day, sixth grade to seventh. Can't even believe it. We'll have our faculty, staff closeout meeting. We're going to share successes of the year, do a year-end wrap-up. And our graduation is on Friday at 7:00 PM. And we're hoping for good weather. We are graduating 32 seniors this year. And if, if our calculations are correct, you know, the state has a certain calculation for the entering cohort, ninth grade, should be at 94%, which is last year were 86. So that's very exciting. And again, that was really a testament to Mr. Switzer and really his work with the teachers and the students and really helping keep everybody on track. So it's very, very exciting. It's been busy, but it'll be nice to enjoy it on Friday. Okay, so for the public that's interested, I do, we do have a formal copy of the blueprint over here if you're interested. So this is our blueprint for Act One. I have slides that are highlights. I'm not going to review the full document, but if you would like to take the phone and look it over, it is online as well. But I did want to let you know that you don't have to write anything down. All right, so. Okay, so as I think everyone by now is aware that we have had a pretty extensive strategic planning process. We started out mid-March with a thought exchange. We work, we're working with, we work for the consultant. And we put out a thought exchange, really surveying all of our stakeholders, community members, anybody, faculty, staff, parents, and really kind of what their thoughts and perceptions of the district were. And then we worked with a group of stakeholders. So along the way, the board met, we met and really kind of identified some of really kind of some of those kind of key desires, wants, and needs for the district along with the district administrators and leadership. And then we really took in process all of that thought exchange and now its meetings and sat down with our next group of stakeholders. And that was, gosh, beginning of May, is that May? It's been, time is blind. Yeah. And so this is really the outcome of the work of that group. And so here it is, I was trying to remember it, and I have it right here in beautiful color. So yeah, it's May. So May, we had our community team that was assembled. We developed our mission, our vision, and our core values from that feedback. So not going to really, if you're ever interested in that feedback that we did on the thought exchange, just give me a call, we can, me, I can share that with you. But this is really kind of a culmination of our, of looking at all of that and of our work. And also then we met, so that those small groups of stakeholder groups really talked about ideas and actions we could achieve, take to achieve our mission and our, our vision. And then we worked on putting some timelines to the action plan. So I'm not going to go through the details of the action plan right now, but they are included in the, in the packet that's available here and that is available online. So I'm just going to give you a quick overview. And if you need more information, feel free to reach out to myself or Mrs. Eastman and she can get those to you. So the first thing we did was we took all that information and as this group, we really looked at our mission statement. Our mission statement is why do we, you know, is really answering the question, why do we exist? And really plain and simple, we're an educational institution. So this is our mission statement that resulted. So Salem Washington Academy empowers, prepares all students for their future by providing each student with unique opportunities to pursue their goals and dreams. So really recognizing that we're here not only to educate, but to provide opportunities that really are fitting for each individual student. Vision, really, so, stop touching us, I'm going to pick up the cooker. So our vision is really, think about how would we fulfill that mission? So we're, so Salem Washington Academy empowers all members of the school community to be invested in lifelong learning, growing, and becoming future-ready. So we felt that it was important to include not only being focused on our students and our children becoming future-ready, but also all of us who support those students and develop them. That, you know, if we as educators are not ourselves learning about future opportunities and the skills and experiences that are important for success for our students, then we're not going to be able to create future-ready citizens. So this was important to us as well. So that's our vision statement. So core values, these are the, the values that we hold dear and that are important to us as a community. The values that we hold dear and that are important to us as a community and we will have these on display. And the goal is, is really to make sure that everything that we do supports our, our vision, our mission and is embodied in these values. So really, you know, as we're making curriculum decision, are they setting up students for our priority areas? If that was somehow not consistent with our mission, then that would not be something that we would want to move forward with. So support, value, respect, integrity, empathy, excellence and collaboration. So we identify three priority areas for the near future. Supportive environment, our goal will be to work collaboratively to support each other, our community, our families, our students and our staff. Academic success for all, foster rigorous academic environment that empowers all students to reach their full potential while achieving their goals and dreams. And community connection. Our goal is to provide our learning experience focused on foundational skill development, support for multiple pathways and offer a wide variety of opportunities that enable students to discover their passion and develop lifelong goals. So everything, the decisions that we make. Whether they are made by administrators or teachers should really fall into one of these areas and really embody our core values. So action steps, so I mentioned that we are developing action steps for each of those goal areas. They identify. Actions that we're going to take in each priority area. And they identify the, the people that will be responsible for leading or completing the work and then the established timeframe. Also talks about additional district or building work that will be added as needed if it falls under one of the priority items. So sometimes, you know, maybe additionally, maybe an action step is to develop a plan. For professional development for our faculty and staff. So then within that plan, there will be some additional action steps that that committee or that group charged with development of the plan would then identify. So sometimes it's a plan to make a plan. And then, you know, I did put on here that if you were interested in really looking at the action steps in detail, that we will be. Rolling out to the faculty and staff, we're going to share this with them tomorrow. And then in September, we'll really take a look at each building at those action steps and how we're going to go about making those possible and putting timelines to them. Accountability and implementation. So. It's important to recognize that there's been a lot of transitions and I think sometimes. It's easy to worry that this is going to be another thing that we start and we don't finish. And I think that's a valid concern because that has occurred over the past few years with a lot of changes in leadership in the buildings and. And recently the superintendentcy, so that's something that we're very committed on to changing. And so we've created a timeline. And we created a timeline for this year and then at the end of next year, we're going to revisit that and create a, that we'll, we'll really look ahead for each year. And that holds us all accountable to each other and the district, to the board and to the community. So really, we're partway into this timeline right now, so we're presenting the plan before the end of the school year. We've unpacked it. With the administrators, we will start to unpack it with the faculty and staff tomorrow in our closeout meeting. We're going to give them the highlights, we're going to kind of start laying the groundwork for it and then we'll come back to that again in September. Right now, we're, because we're just getting started in this process, it's going to take a little time to really get things running and rolling. So we're looking at quarterly updates next year to the Board of Education, the community and the staff on, on how we're doing. In February, we'll start taking a look at. What we've accomplished, what's going to need more time, how do they fit into maybe expenditures that need to be planned for to made in the future budget? So that we can make sure that we are budgeting to support the work that we're doing. That's another component that sometimes leads to failure because we plan all of these things and we don't think about how much it costs and the timing of it. So we want to make sure that what we want to work on the following year and 24, 25 will be funded. So that will be our step in February and we'll keep you posted that along the way. In June, we'll do a final blueprint update to the board, the community and staff. And then next summer, we'll reassess. You know, right now, because again, we're new, some districts are, you know, here's five, six, seven of this type of a process. So we're, we're going to learn from that. I really think that some of the work that we've identified, when you look at the action plans and the stuff, there's a lot, there's a lot there. And it's going to take probably two or three years to accomplish some of those things that have been identified. So really looking at planning and having it be achievable. We're also adding a curriculum, new administrators, new technology to support the work, professional development. Those things take time and I think it needs to be a slow roll and the things that we can have a slow roll. Some things are going to be important to get off the ground and get going. But I think that is important for the board and the community and our families and our faculty and staff to understand is that. In order to be successful, we have to be very deliberate and we have to make sure that our faculty and staff and our families and our students all have the support to accomplish what we have in this plan. And so that's professional development and it's funding. Okay, so I see a couple of hands, I'll get, let me just finish up here. And so I just want to have our blueprint team up here, so we have a very well-rounded team. And so I'll take questions.
So each one of these is a pretty robust project, you know, developing plan and then I assume that plan will be implemented, so there's also an implementation involved?
Right.
So that's extensive, but my question to you is, how do you evaluate success? How do you, are you going to structure a standardized way of evaluating each project so you don't go insane?
Well, so, so depending on the project, so, so some of this will be to sit down and say, what's our plan? So. If we develop a plan, some of those measurements will be in there. A lot of what we measure will be data supported.
Self-evaluate in a way?
Yes, well, there'll be some self-evaluation, there, there may be, you know, I think each year we do thought exchange as a follow-up with some specific questions. So once we work on those quarterly updates, we can let you know what we're rolling on, really implementation phase, what we're working on planning phase. Some of them are getting committees up and running that have been defunded for a few years. So it's just the matter of getting the committee going, getting them to be productive. And then if that committee is going to be part of forming a plan, that may take some time to inform them. So we'll update you. So I think some of the evaluation comes from just immediately is, are we doing it? Right? And then, you know, if we say we're going to make a plan, where is that? Or, okay, we ran into some roadblocks, it's going to take us a little more time, but having those regular communications. So I think some accountability is just being open about it and I think transparent is used a lot these days, but there, for lack of a better term, I think really that's what it is. It is keeping people informed. And, and I think that again, along the way, we looked at this very holistically and very from a high level. And some of what we can do initially will have no cost, but then other things are going to have a cost associated with that. And we have to be mindful of that and really look at how that fits in and which then to prioritize. So there may need to be some conversations in the future about that. And so typically, this process, most districts that have been, that are very successful with utilizing this type of process. They do their big thought exchange, their big strategic, their blueprint for excellence. Kind of a very big overhaul, I would say every five years. So you really want to think about some of this work will get done in the first year or two. And some of what we put in there, we worked in some things that are already, we've already started this year. Because they're important and they're in line with where we want to go. So some things are already in progress, we budgeted for, we have a plan for. Other things that we're going to need to continue to look at that. So I think it's really looking at in the, in, you know, the next five years, how do we roll that out? So let's, the works complementing each other, so that we've got people prepared and we're not overwhelming people to the point where they're saying, listen, I've got too many new things going on. But I think there, there will be a certain, to a certain extent. Data involved.
The evaluation method is important to me.
And I think really, remember when you go back again to our mission and our vision, right? It's about students being future ready and successful. So there's going to be data, graduation rate, the variety of pathways that we offer. You know, the variety of pathways students are taking. You know, what opportunities are we providing? Are our students successful? Have our literacy rates gone up, right? If, if our students are not improving their proficiency levels as a whole, we have some work to do. And that'll be another conversation when we present our, our next set of data. But, you know, students need to be proficient and I think that's just the minimum expectation is proficiency, you know, that. And so how many students are in eighth grade, how many students are, you know, we're reducing our dropout rates? I don't know, like we're, we have this pocket of kids, I mean, it's our sixth, seventh, eighth graders. Were really, really going to be hit the, they'll hit the hardest. You know, we had kids in ninth grade this year that never really had traditional middle school. You know, the last year was pretty traditional, but there were a lot of gaps. There were still a lot of different things going on, the, the full expectations weren't there. So when you think about some of those kids going through and not having traditional middle schools and being successful, that's those are skill sets. So I think we're going to see a period of, you know, I think this year, 94% is, is great and I'm very proud of that. There's a lot of work that's gone into that, but we, you know. We're going to see some struggles along the way. And I think that's going to be universal and for me and for, we've, I've done some other presentations where, to me. I think when you see other people having a struggle. I think we can, we can learn from each other, we can all understand why it is, but it's not, you know, to me, as low proficiency isn't acceptable. 100% graduation is the only acceptable number to me. So we have, it's going to take a while to get there. So I think ultimately, those numbers are the true success.
Yeah, I was just thinking in terms of stakeholder interviews, surveys of key people.
I think it depends on which area you're looking at as to how you're going to be able to assess it.
I was just wishing we could make it like this year.
Right.
By standardizing the evaluation.
Right, I think so. I think there's a piece of that and I think the thought changes get it in a different way, but it's also. Sometimes can be subjective. And, and so even we look, we look at some other situations is if you, if you, it's hard, as much as we try to get all the information out there, everybody gets different levels or amounts, depending at the time of how important that information might be or whether or not you got it or had time for it. So I think that's one factor and I think as Heidi pointed out, it will depend on, you know, I think what it is. And so I think when we develop some of those more specific plans. Those should have really true, you know, most people like to talk about SMART goals, specific and measurable and, and really it's not a goal that we can't measure it. So I think those are some of the things we'll have to.
There's ways to qualify and measure goals as well. And I think that one thing that we need to bear, bear in mind as a board, as administrators, is that we embrace the mission, the values and the core values and then the vision. And when someone comes up with an idea of starting a new extracurricular club, how does it beat the vision? How does it beat the mission? How does it incorporate the core values? When, when the circus comes in to present a new class. That language should be used, how does it, what, what does the mission, how does it need permission, how does it need division? What, how does it incorporate the core values? And if we can instill the use of that language as, as a daily occurrence here in, in the hallway. That to me would be a very powerful qualitative analysis of, of success of, of the program. I agree that, that data can be powerful and the quantitative analysis is important. But there's, one of the women's can the cat, and I think if, if we, if we make this, we put an awful lot of time into this and it gives a lot of support with it. We, we, we now are responsible for it.
Right, and I, and I, and there is some, when you look at those action steps, so when we're looking at culture. There, there are some surveys involved in that. And that really is going to get to some of these core values that I just put back up there. Because, you know, I think one of the things is we haven't had something to live by and that's going to take a while to, to build that into our culture, to really be able to communicate that. And I think the thought exchange, if we continuously do that, like once a year consistently, we actually had. At the stakeholder work session with a consultant, we actually had a higher participation rate than the average. Usually it's about one-third and we on almost half. Half of what our population is. Responds, so it was quite. I think it was quite encouraging that I think. We have a great way to get feedback and I think the more we use a thought exchange, you know, you don't want to overuse it, but if we do that annually, getting feedback, processing that feedback to inform us moving forward, that would be helpful. Right, any other questions?
And do we have any amendments to the rest of the agenda?
We have an addendum with four active items on it. There's the student information bits, we're going to adopt and put out to adopt the ACESF from here and ask them to look through the new social studies. And that is public on the website. So we have our consent agenda, does anyone have to kind of remove from the consent agenda? Jen, you're familiar with how that works, we, if you, if you wanted, we usually approve it as one. If you wanted to have a question answered about a specific topic, you can pick that out and, and deal with that separately. So if you have a question.
I'll shout it out.
Motion to accept the consent agenda as presented by Heidi, second by Peter, although in favor, please signify by raising your hand, motion carried by Sarah. And moving on to our committee reports, the finance personnel committee, have you had a meeting or?
We have not.
And the policy, we haven't had a meeting, but we did work, Gina worked with me to come up with a draft policy to consider over the summer on public expression. We also do have some second reads of policies that have been, been in process on this agenda. So didn't have a meeting, but still some work was going on. Safety committee?
There's been two safety meetings I did not make last time, but the first one, we, we started working with Needham Risk Management. I think it's going to be a, a good partnership, it's going to be a really good direction for us. They're going to really help, we'll run these meetings, making sure that our safety plan, our go-bags, all of our emergency stuff is taken care of and that we're all, you know, doing a great job, so.
But the last meeting, we had a smaller group because it's a busier time to get everybody together, but just to really go through and have some discussions related to just updating that district safety plan. And we'll, we'll talk about that a little more at the presentation in August. Will Needham be there for the? I, I have asked them if they would present, I think it would. I don't know if it's necessary every, every year, but I think since this is the first time that we're working with them on some of the plans, probably will ask them to come a little more often, just so you can see their quality of their work and, and the level.
Probably will ask them to come a little more often, just so you can see their quality of their work and, and the level of what they can. Provide to the district. I think that would be important to showcase that to the public and, and to the board.
And moving on to our action items. Entertain a motion to accept the resignation for the purpose of retirement from Lauren Patrick, high school secretary. Effective December thirty first, twenty twenty three.
Take it down on the second.
Motion by Dan, second by Heidi. All those in favor, please signify by raising a hand. Entertain a motion to accept the resignation of Mary Brayden, teacher aid, effective June twenty third, twenty twenty three. There's no objections. I'd like to combine the next five items. Entertain a motion to. Prove the following coaching appointments. Heather Keys, varsity girls soccer. Miriam Nessel, modified girls soccer. Trevor McGlon, varsity boys soccer. Stacy Rich, varsity girls field hockey and Jocelyn Nolan, volunteer field hockey, all levels. If there's no objection, I'd like to combine the next nine items or extended school year. Entertain a motion to approve the following extended school year appointments. Madison Hunt, six one one teacher aid. Tanya Bonds, six one one teacher aid and substitute teacher aid. Michelle Wren, twelve one one teacher aid and substitute teacher aid. Heidi McCollum, twelve one one teacher aid. Carol Shaw, one on one student aid. Micaiah Roschinsky, substitute teacher in all rooms. Holly Keys, six one one teacher aid. Sandy Bramer, school nurse and Todd DeSoto, summary motion. All those in favor, please signify by raising a hand. Motion carry five zero. Entertain a motion to rescind the appointment of Alicia LeClaire as an extended school year teach six four one teacher age. Originally appointment, original pointer was May sixteen point twenty three. Entertain a motion to approve the budget transfer as presented. Second by Jen. Any questions, concerns? All those in favor, please signify by raising a hand. Motion carry five zero. Entertain a motion to approve the request from Savannah Lewis for her daughter Phelan to attend as a tuition student in kindergarten. For the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four school year.
Yes, I mean, I saw it and I reviewed.
No, it's actually.
Oh, ours are not numbered right then.
No, this morning.
We have two different agendas going.
I do have Phelan on here.
That's really strange because we, and that's what I read. So was that something that I?
So six point three and six point four twisted, just depending on which agenda you have. Hers has a six point three, mine has a six point four.
But they're both on there?
They're both on there. They're just in different numbers for some reason.
They are on there. I was like, wait a minute, I don't remember reading.
So mine has the non-resident as. No, because mine and Jen are different. We're sitting right at me. So we just have two different agendas. No, we have multiple.
Mine is six four. Mine says that's on six four, so.
Yeah, mine didn't. That's what I have too, it's like. Yeah, so they're just six point three and six point four are on different.
But there's still items on.
There's still items on the agenda.
Should we go by the numbers of what's online?
Or does it?
I'm wondering for the minutes purposes. We can go by her numbers for the minutes purposes. It's, it, it, as long as we have it. However, you want to do it, we can do those numbers.
Well, we just approved this one.
A motion from Heidi and second from Jen.
We do have a question about the numbering of it, but.
So since we have a motion and a second, we should act on. Any other questions or concern? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carry five zero. My, my agenda is six four, non-resident students and faculty and staff. If there's no objection, there are, I have seven action items under that. Entertain a motion to approve the agreement. That's a superintendent entered into with the following faculty or staff members for their child or children. To attend Salem Central School tuition free under policy seventy one thirty two, the twenty three, twenty four school year. Aaron Lozier, Karen Caligari, Ashley Jarvis, Joe Wilbur, Aaron Underwood, Jen Russo and Sherry Connors. We do have some policies that have come up for approval. If there's no objection, I'd like to waive the second reading and. For adoption, since this is our last meeting of this school year. Objections to that? Entertain a motion to waive, to waive the second reading and adopt the following policies. Policy thirty four ten, code of conduct. Policy eighty one ten, curriculum development, resources and evaluation. Policy eighty three twenty, textbooks, library materials and other instructional materials. Policy eighty three thirty, object, objection to instructional materials and controversial issues. And policy eighty three forty, policy instructional materials and non-public school students. Any questions or concerns about that? All those in favor, please signify by raising a hand. We're killing committee for all of that work.
And we saw, I think. Version of what it will look like going forward to in terms of the, the development, evaluation and patience to. They did a great job.
Moving on, we have an exchange student. Entertain a motion to approve the following exchange student as a non-tuition student with the twenty twenty three, twenty four school year. We have a student from India. I'm glad to see that it's back up in room. Do you think it's coming into the summer or?
I don't know. Sometimes we do, we're, we're open to that. If, as long as they can find a host family, we're, we're open to.
Receiving them until school starts. All those in favor, please signify by raising a hand. Motion carry five zero. We have two building use requests. Entertain a motion to approve the following building request from the Salem Historic Courthouse. They would like to use our circle parking area on the fourth of July as a staging area for their parade. Motion by Heidi. They changed the direction of the parade. It will end up here in the courthouse.
So yes, they're going to have the carnival here.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carry five zero. Entertain a motion to approve the request from Salem Cambridge Middle League to use the baseball fields for games and practice. Practice during the weeks of June and July from five until dark. Their insurance is on file. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising a hand. Motion carry five zero. Entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the Salem Central School District. And the Historic Salem Courthouse Preservation Association Incorporated for the purposes of transportation. For their lunch, learn and play program effective July first, twenty twenty three through August thirtieth, twenty twenty three. Although Baylor, please signify by raising a hand. Motion carry five zero. Entertain a motion to approve the agreement with Salem Center of the School District and Urban and Palazzo effective July first, twenty twenty three. All those in favor, please signify by raising a hand. Motion carry five zero. Do these need to be separate? Motion or is it one? Entertain a motion to approve the following change orders. There are two from the Gentry Mechanical. One for thirty four thousand, three hundred forty five dollars and ninety eight cents. And the other a hundred and one, a hundred and one thousand, five hundred thirty four and forty three cents.
So just to be clear, those are credits.
So does this finish out all of the chain orders?
We believe so. Yes, they, they, it looks like it's winding.
Winding down? Okay, good.
Yes, I tried to be clear about it.
All those in favor, please signify by raising a hand. Motion carry five zero. If there are no objections, I'd like to combine the next ten items. Entertain a motion to approve the salary and support stipend increases for the twenty three, twenty four school year as presented. This actually just goes with what our budget discussions were from. Any other comments or concerns? All those in favor, please signify by raising a hand. Entertain a motion to approve Damian Switzer as the mentor. Sean Grady, our junior senior high school principal, effective for the twenty three, twenty four school year.
So I just want to, to mention, so there will pay a fee through BOCs, but. So because it's through BOCs, the board does not approve the BOCs expenditures, but I did want to have him approved as a mentor. Since he's mentoring an administrator, so that we would be clear that he, that Sean is, is okay to discuss. Some, some school matters with his mentor. And this is required because he is a first year, this is required by New York State as well that he have a mentor, just, just so.
Good idea either way.
Yes, yes, either way.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carry five zero. Entertain a motion to approve the payment of Julie Adams's membership with the New York State Association for Women in Administration. Effective for the twenty three, twenty four school year. Second by Jen. Questions, concerns? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carry five zero. Entertain a motion to adopt Salem Washington Academy, due for excellence in the district's strategic plan. I'm glad to see it's how it came together. Yeah, this is a very interesting process to go through with that thought exchange. So. I'm looking forward to getting a little more proficient with it.
Yes, I think. I think it was a very worthwhile endeavor and it was a lot of work and, you know, we appreciate everybody who was involved. Oh, everybody who contributed to the thought exchange. We had a great turnout and. Look forward to seeing the results of our work.
Yes, very good.
Been very efficient for what could be a long, enduring process.
All right, we do have to set the date for our July meeting, our annual organizational meeting. Entertain a motion to approve that Salem Central School District organizational meeting held on July thirteenth, twenty twenty three. At six o'clock in the high school library. We will combine it with our regular monthly meeting. All those in favor, please signify by raising a hand. Motion carry five zero.
We should have asked this beforehand. So. Then we should have the hearing at five forty five if we've got six o'clock on here. Okay. For the code of conduct?
Yes.
We just need to know how to post that.
Or you can have it at six and say that the organizational meeting will.
Well, we just approved the time for six P M. I don't know. I mean, we could change it after and just post it, but I just wanted to be clear about.
Well, we could post at six o'clock. We do the presentation and then organizational and regular meetings to follow.
We can look into the details either, either way. We'll let you know. Just want to be consistent with what we just approved, that's all.
And moving on to the addenda, addendum items. There's no objection. Entertain a motion to approve the transportation bid approvals as presented. Entertain a motion to adopt the math program, Intu Math by Holton Mifflin-Hartcourt. For grades K through six and for grades seven through, seven and eight at the discretion of the superintendent. I, I'm excited to see the unified programs going into place.
Yes, positive. It's an exciting opportunity to make good use of that. Grant money. Well, one more to come sign and search next week.
All those in favor, please signify by raising a hand. Motion carry five zero. And our last action item. Entertain a motion to approve the new course, culture, society and personal development. And to be part of the social studies department worth one credit and offered to eleventh and twelfth graders. I'm glad to see those, you know, those different courses are being developed. That's exciting.
Yes, thank you.
At this point, I'd like to open the meeting up again and our public comment session. If there's anybody who has. Any comments or concerns they'd like to raise to the board, you can come to the podium.
We missed seven point one. If the board would be here.
I'm so transparent.
Thank you. I do have to come back to, to finish that. Opportunities for the board to be heard. And there was a webinar.
Several nights ago, I spoke with Herb Perkins, who you all know, is taking over the courthouse. And I should be where he has. He's been very clear to everyone. And Herb has, once again, expressed interest in reviving the courthouse readers program and the mentor program at the courthouse. He asked if I would bring that to the board meeting and make sure that his wishes were met. I know that we've put a lot of those things on the back burner and we're just still trying to get the pedal on the bike. Moving in the right direction again and it's, it's going to be a long process, but if we have. Something as beneficial as the courthouse and the people that are working over there, willing to step in and. Help us get the bike on the right direction, then by all means, I think we should.
So once our, I'll add this to my list.
Principals, you know, with that.
I think just recognizing. I think um just recognizing there'll be a lot for them to take on the beginning, but to reach out and make that connection with him and um start having those conversations. And um I did sit in on a webinar about using committees. And at first I thought, you know, my drove, fell down into my stomach when I saw the list of required committees, and they were board committees. But there are committees that should be operating within school districts. And what they were trying to say is that, at least my takeaway, is that those committees are doing good work, and we should make sure that we are hearing from them, to make them part of of the conversations that we have and have them share the information that they have as we will make our decisions about how how we can move forward. So I just think that as we start to reorganize ourselves as a board for next school year, take a look at the committees and look at the strategic plan. I know there are some committees that are going to be coming back into existence just to take a long-term look at how those committees, you know, we should be hearing from them. We should, you know, see, see their work. So just to, you know, and and not everybody all at once, but just to kind of talk about how we can incorporate the the work that is done. That's like, so that's a snapshot, acknowledge that.
Does anybody else have any other? And we do have dates to remember, including graduate. So um we have a lot of days. So um is that right? So entertain a motion to um enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing collective negotiations and the discussion of the evaluation of a particular person.
So moved.
Motion by Heidi.
Second.
Any action?
I'm not anticipating any action.
No.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Very five zero.